It is five o'clock and February 8th. Let's get this Lansing City Council's Committee, the whole to order and ask that the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Present, reporting, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Hussein.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Wood.
President, participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Jackson.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Spitzley.
Assistant participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Councilmember Dunbar.
President participating from South Lansing.
Councilmember Garza.
President participating remotely from Lansing, Michigan.
Seven members present, you have a quorum of council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice President, a motion for the minutes, please.
Sure, I would move the January 25th, 2021 meeting minutes as presented.
Very good, thank you. There's a motion before us, is there any discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk please call the roll.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Very good. Next on our agenda is public comment. Those wishing to give public comment should do so by raising their hands. And you do that with Option Y on a Mac, Alt-Y on a PC, and Star 9 on a telephone. And City TV, you're going to have to help me here because I see there are 23 people in the meeting, but I can't see names or hands. So please help me know if there is, if there are any hands raised.
Would you have Loretta Stanaway with her hand raised?
All right, so first up is Loretta Stanaway. Ms. Stanaway, you have three minutes. And then after Ms. Stanaway is finished, that will be the conclusion of signing up for public comment.
Okay, and I am participating remotely from Tucson, Arizona, where it's 73 degrees.
Yeah, no one wants to hear that, Loretta.
Exactly. Okay, speaking on the baseball agreement, I tried to look through all the documentation and come up with a side-by-side comparison. There was a lot of information in there, and I'm not sure I understood it all correctly. But if I did, it looks to me like our net capital improvement outlay overall would increase by 200,000 over the term of the agreement. And it looks like both the loans for the stadium improvements and additional financing of a million point two five each. Although they would be repaid under the terms of the agreement, and there's no discussion of how the city would come out in terms of the costs of those loans, the interest that we would be paying versus what we would be reimbursed by the stadium. So that's a concern. And I was really also, I'm pretty sure it's fairly typical, but it bothers me that there's a phrase in the agreement that when the city does its annual audit, the information they obtain as to the financial condition of the stadium is confidential and not open to the public. It's public money that's funding this. I think it should be public information. As near as I could determine, doing a cost comparison overall side-by-side, the projected possible losses to the city went from a negative 76529 on the low end to $2,260,529 on the high end, to a doubling of the projected loss on the low end to 1.434583 million, or up to 2.934583 million on the high end for an overall net increase of possible projected losses of $665,054. So I'm not sure if this is a good deal or not, but I hope that you guys will dig deeply into those details and make sure that you get the best possible deal for the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stanaway. Now go away. Back to Arizona. All right, so the next person that we are going to be speaking to is, I believe I've been told, Diamond Daniels. Diamond, you have three minutes to speak to the committee. The floor is yours.
Hang on, I'm gonna call you right back.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Hello.
Hello.
Hi, I'm sorry. I'm a reporter with News 10. I'm actually just looking for permission to record. Is there, I don't know who to get that from, but.
Yeah, I don't know that we, with webinars, I don't think we can do that. I think it was only the meetings back unless there's something I'm missing, but we are recording the meeting, so it will be available for recording later.
I'm sorry. Isn't it a public meeting? Why wouldn't, why wouldn't she be able to record this, Jim?
Patricia, there is a technology limitation. She can record if she wants with external software, but Zoom doesn't allow the webinar.
No, no, that's what I meant. Okay, no, that's what I meant.
Yeah, there's no, we're not denying her permission to record the meeting. It's just there's the, there's a technological impediment to anyone recording the meeting.
Internally, okay, but I'll do it externally. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that.
That's okay. Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah, of course. Yes, sorry, Patricia, I'm not denying anyone permission. It's just there's.
No, I just wanted a little clarification. I figured that was, but sorry, thank you.
No worries.
And that was the last person with their hand raised for public comment.
Very good. Thank you very much all for your comments. If the council doesn't object, we do have the internal auditor going to do the CAFR today, but we do have Mr. Matthew Lancy, who actually, it's not a reappointment, it's an appointment to the Airport Authority Board. And if, with no objection, we'd like to just get that one taken care of and then move into the rest of the committee's business. So we will have that person. I know that Matt, you've been called into the meeting. So let's have you pop up. And how we typically handle this, sir, is we have the applicant tell us a little bit about themselves, why they're seeking this position, you know, what they think they can bring to, to the, to the Board or Commission. And then we, we ask questions of the applicant and generally move on from there. So the floor is yours, Matt.
Sure. Hi, my name is Matt Lancy. I have lived in North Lansing for five years and in the region basically my entire life. I currently work for the Michigan House as a legislative assistant. And I wanted to join the Airport Board mainly because it's such an economic driver for the city and the region. And I want to make sure that we can, you know, provide the best environment for it to thrive. And COVID's kind of taken a bite out of that on the passenger side, but the cargo side is thriving. So that's, you know, an area to focus on going forward while trying to recover passenger traffic going forward as well. So plus, I just love airplanes, so that's part of it. And living literally within, you know, a quarter mile of it, the UPS flights at night are kind of like a, you know, a night, nice sound machine. So that's a little bit about me.
I'm also a fan of airplanes, so you got my vote. But are there questions for Mr. Lancy? All right, well, that was, that was relatively painless. So, Mr. Vice President, I entertain a motion.
Sure, I would move the appointment of Matthew Lancy as a city member to the Capital Area Region Airport Authority Board, and the term would expire September 30th of 2024, so.
All right, any further discussion before we call the roll? Seeing none, if the clerk would please call the roll.
Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero, and it is on the council agenda tonight.
Okay. Mr. Lancy, just as a point of reference, you do not need to attend this evening at 7:00. The same people that voted tonight will be voting on it this evening, so I don't imagine we'll have any more questions.
Okay.
Also, once we vote tonight, please arrange with the clerk a chance to take the oath of office. You can do that through his office with appointments, and then you may take your seat on the, on the, uh, well, I don't know, Sherry is the airport aboard one that requires an oath, must be, yes. Yeah, arrange it with city clerks to take the oath, and then you'll be able to take your seat. Thank you for your interest in services city.
Absolutely, thank you so much.
Of course. All right, next up, everybody's favorite subject, audits. And tonight presenting is newly returned to the city of Lansing, our internal auditor, Mr. Eric Brewer. Mr. Brewer, I think you're here.
We're bringing him in.
We're bringing him in. There he is. Welcome back, Eric.
Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Oh, yeah, is, is, I reviewed, there's a requirement of the financial position analysis done by the internal auditor per the charter. And you should have all received the email with the information. I actually forgot some of the appendices on the first one, so I actually sent that and noticed that when I was actually reviewing the information today to go over tonight. And like, obviously, there's a lot of graphs and information in there, so what I'll do is I'll just go at the top level on the executive summary. And then obviously, you know, you have the document, so you can look at the graph. So I actually won't actually put a whole bunch of numbers to there. You can look at the graphical representation on the report. And obviously, I'm getting used to Zoom, so like I said, instead of sharing the document and then screwing that up, I figured you could just follow along with your own paper or on your own screen, so. But after the review of the comprehensive annual financial report, it appears the city of Lansing's financial position is decreasing. This is based on the fact that comprehensive annual financial report for the government-wide financial statements show a negative trend for revenues. In addition, the government-wide financial showed an increased trend in expenses from the prior comprehensive annual financial report. Because of the surge trends in revenues and expenses resulted in a decrease in change in net condition reported on the government-wide financials, statements. And there should be a chart, it's government-wide revenue, government-wide expenses, and the change in net position, it kind of shows you the trend. Obviously, with the financial conditions of COVID, this is, it's not unexpected for this to occur based on all the outside influences within the market. Consequently, looking at the modified fund statements, these are the individual fund accounts, the, or short-term perspective. The individual funds had mixed results with some positive and negative trends for the government funds, proprietary funds, and fiduciary funds. The government funds category, the general fund and non-major government funds had a slight increases, and that can be seen on the chart, government funds net position. The proprietary funds, including the general fund, service fund for comparison purposes, had a decreased overall trend in net position with increases in internal service fund, non-major enterprise funds, and stewardship disposal system fund. Consequently, these were offset by the decrease in municipal parking system funds, and that you should see the chart for proprietary funds with internal service net position for your reference, for graphical representation. The fiduciary funds had a decreased overall trend in net position with increases in retired healthcare, VEB, employees' money purchasing, purchase pension plan, police and fire retirement system, OPEB, employers' retirement system pension, and consequently, these were offset by decreases in the police and fire retirement system and employee retirement system pension. You can see the fiduciary funds net position on the graph. The component units had a decreased overall trend in net position with decreases in Lansing Entertainment and Public Facilities Authority Tax Increment, Finance Authority, Brownsville Brewery Development Authority, and you can see the component units net position chart. And this is, this is a standard statement. I've always included some of the previous ones. And it looks like the liability increased for OPEB or the pension. And one of the primary reasons because the financial investments didn't do very well, and that always fluctuates sometimes based on the market. So hopefully, it recovers and it won't be as bad, but it looks really bad when you kind of look at the prior year in the table and then also in the appendices. The long-term financial basis is still a little incur. This is because of the significant short-term resources used with long-term liabilities created from the pension and other post-employment benefits, OPEB. This is one of the primary reasons why the government-wide financial statements, long-term perspective, does not reflect as well or in performance-related fund financial statements because the inclusion of the net position liability of the 308 million and the other net post-employment benefit lobby of 521 million. These liabilities are reported within the government activity liabilities as required by Government Accounting Standards Board, GASB 68 and GASB 75. Obviously, those are not booked when you look to the fund accounting because it's a liability. That's why the, that's, if you look at Appendix O, you'll see the breakdown where I have each individual component of the individual funds and how it reconciled to the government-wide. And that's one of the things that it is included in the government-wide. That's why fund financial always looks a little bit better because you don't have those long-term liabilities included in those individual funds. And that's the conclusion of my presentation unless there's other questions.
All right. Are there, thank you, Ms. Brewer, very much. Are there questions from the council? I do see Councilmember Wood has her hand up. So Councilmember Wood, the floor is yours.
Do we have the audit firm here or not?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, if we, my first question would be if the audit firm could go over their letter with us and point out any factors that they saw within the audit for corrective action. Also, I believe you're new at doing this and for us, for the city of Lansing. And so if you could, if you have any comparison from our last audit and the letter, and whether there was any improvements based on those, I would appreciate those references as well. Everybody went off, back and forth to try to get the information. So if we can start off with those, those are my first questions.
Great, good evening. Let me make sure everybody can hear me.
Yes, Steve.
I'm Steve Kernick. I'm partnering with Mayor Kasterson here in Lansing. And, and so I have pretty much everything here. I've got some of the prior information and, and, and and really, this is extremely exciting, so I'm sure you'll all be, it'll be, I know there was some, a little bit of a joke about, about that, but, but this information is, is, to me, as a nerd, you know, accounting nerd, it's, it's very exciting. So I can share a little bit of that information, Ms. Wood, on, on the prior audit compared to the current year, and I can share a little bit about that. And then I've got kind of a little other presentation to go through some of the financial information, you know, as it pertains to the, the June 30, 2020 audited financial statements, similar to what Mr. Brewer, he went over a lot of that information. I've got, you know, a little bit different, you know, take on some of it as, as far as the external side of, of things. But, but a vast majority of the, getting out the prior audit, my, I had the current year information right at my fingertips. And, and, but as I, as I talk, I will try to talk and flip through the prior audit at the same time to, to pull that information to be able to share some of that comparison that you asked for. So, um, so we can start with that letter as part, I could share it on the screen if you cared to have that or if.
Yes, please.
Um, so let me test my skills here. Okay, and is that showing on your screen or not?
Yes.
It is, okay, wonderful. Wow, that only took one try. So, um, so in addition to auditing the numbers and so forth, we also look at your systems, processes, procedures, internal controls and so forth. And then as a result, we issue this letter, as you can see here on the, on the screen. And as far as the details, I'll just kind of scroll down here to a couple of different presentations of, of this letter. And there are, I think about, there are about eight comments that are, that are noted in here. Several, several of them are somewhat similar, repeated comments from, from last year with some, you know, modifications and so forth. This first comment I know is, is something similar to what you had seen in the past with material journal entries. As part of our audit process, we take a trial balance from, we take the county records from the city, and then, you know, it comes to being this large CAFR report that, that you have in front of you tonight also. And if we make adjustments and proposed journal entries in the middle there, between what you'd see on the left and what you see on the right, so to speak, we have this audit comment related to material journal entry. So, so that comment, pretty similar to what you had saw last year, various proposed entries that, that we made for the city to post to the, to the systems to get everything in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. So that is a repeat. I think there were less comments, I don't know specifically, or less entries. I don't know specifically how many entries they had last year, but we proposed a handful of entries that were material enough to, to warrant this comment. And I think that will cyclically get better each year as, as I think there's continuity in the finance office, you know, compared to, I know there's been some turnover, had been some turnover in the past. And, and so, so that's, and that's a pretty common comment that we see in, you know, a vast number of our municipalities that we, that we audit. I mean, we have probably close to 200, 250 governmental entities that, that we work with. And that's probably a comment that we see in 60 to 75% of our, of our comments. So that's a very common comment that, that we see in governmental entities. The second comment relates to bank reconciliations. This also was a repeat comment from, from the past. Again, I think the city has, has shown some improvements. I think it may even say in there in one of those sections. I won't read it to you and bore you with the details, but, but there were, you know, areas within their reconciliation process that, that were not completed until after year-end, till after the audit process was, was ongoing. And like I said, that is a repeated comment in the 2020 fiscal year. And, you know, and I think, again, I think the city is working on that process. As you can see, I think the corrective action related to that particular one was pretty detailed. As you can see, you know, there are A through, A through D as far as the process to, to rectify that, that finding and moving forward into the current year. The third point there relates to pension and OPEB liability. And there's a, there's a variety of things there as, as you all know, as council. The pension and OPEB light, or pension and OPEB activity is substantial, as Mr. Brewer had mentioned. And a lot goes into gathering all that data and producing, producing the GASB statements that, that are required for, for presentation within your CAFR. So there were various items in there that, that were submitted to the actuary and running through the actuarial process that took kind of right up until the, the, the tail end of the, the audit process. And so as, as you can read through there, there were a handful of items as far as getting the information to the actuary. Actually, some of the, what we call census data, the information that gets submitted to the actuaries and then the return of the reports. Talk about, kind of tongue-in-cheek, but as you, as you think, if you think that audited financial statements are, are interesting to look at, try to look at an actuarial study and five or six actuarial studies, they're even, they're even more interesting than, than an audit report. And, and so, so various different components of that process, we're recommending there that, that the city look at, evaluate, clean up, make sure that the files are kept up to date on all the employees and that type of thing with the, with the pension and OPEB boards and so forth. And like I said, that was a repeat comment. Again, a couple of different nuances this year, but that was a repeat comment from, from the prior year. The next comment was related to reconciliation of revenue transactions. This happened to concentrate on the Lansing Board of Water and Light equity payments. As we looked at that process, we were unable to verify the specific procedures that were performed to test and assure the accuracy of those dollars. This was not a repeat comment. This was a new comment from this year. And again, as, as we go through the audit process professionally, we're different than the prior auditors. You know, we look at things differently than, than the other prior auditors did, and everybody kind of takes a different, a new look or a new eye on things. And this was an area that as, as part of the audit process, we're always required to be unpredictable and kind of select new areas for, for analysis. And this was an area that, a large, or a large revenue source for the, the city. I think 23-ish million. And, and so we looked at that and tried to, you know, compare that analytically. It compared very close to last year. It was actually up, I think it was up about $2 million, if I recall. But the specifics to verify the accuracy of that number, we weren't able to tie it out specifically. So we're recommending that, that that be looked at and analyzed on an annual basis to ensure that the city is getting their rightful share of, of those payments. The, the fifth point here was related to reconciliation of assets and liabilities. And in just a variety of, of areas, as we looked at this, in the posting of, the posting of transactions and some of the analysis and tie-out of payroll liabilities was, was one of the areas that we, we focused on. And that was an area, when all is said and done, the audit process was finalized. These were all adjusted by the city and they spent a substantial amount of time and a lot of work going through the, the analysis of those, those liability accounts. At the start of the audit, they weren't where they needed to be. And, and so, so that was a big area here because I know those liability accounts were, were not, they were materially misstated at the beginning of the audit. But like I said, the, the finance office did, did a substantial amount of work to get those liabilities back in, in order. So we're recommending here those reconciliations be done on a periodic basis and tied out more, more efficiently, so, so you assure that the balances are accurate on an ongoing basis. And I don't think that was a comment last year. I think that was a, that's a new comment that, that, again, one of our, one of our areas that we, that we concentrated on. Policies and procedures, again, is what we do is probably part of that process is we look at policies and procedures and areas of, of written policies. And so we're making some recommendations here of some policies that, whether they be required by a particular public act or maybe as a best practice, some areas there it talks about is business continuation, electronic fund transfers. I think there's a public act related to that. I don't recall the numbers specifically, but, and then some of the other ones are, are some areas of, again, best practices that we would recommend that, that the, the city look at those areas and potentially develop and adopt policies related to those areas. That was a new comment. That wasn't anything that was, was in there last year. This payroll process comment that is, was in there last year, again, maybe a different spin on it, but, but a lot of the data is manually entered and maintained. We didn't find any errors in, in the amounts that people were getting paid or, or anything like that. But the process procedurally is very manual. And, and so as we looked at that process, you know, we, we made some, again, best practices recommendations here that, that payroll could get processed without the proper upfront approval and documentation related to some of the, the areas within the payroll. Kind of more of a approval was more of an after-the-fact type process. So, so a recommendation there to, to evaluate that on an ongoing basis. And I, like I said, that was a, was, I believe, a repeat from, partially repeat from last year. And then finally, just budget variances. We're required, you know, accordance to the public act. If, if you were a dollar over budget, we're required to, you know, report it. And, and so, so there were some areas that were over budget. If you wanted to look at the, in the CAFR, the actual audit report, I think it's page 130, 34. There are some details in there of some overage, budget overage areas and so forth. So like I said, we're required to, to report on that as, as needed. So those are the real high, you know, I know not, not real fast, but, but a real brief overview of, of the comments. So those are the real high, you know, I know not, not real fast, but, but a, a real, a brief overview of, of the comments. Some of the comments that were in last year's audit, um, were cleared. They had some other reconciliation items, stale items and, and, and so forth. Related to the bank reconciliations that were resolved and, uh, you know, and those type of things. And, and looking at the other comments, I don't have everything right here in front of me. So you can't quote me specifically, especially since we didn't audit the prior year. There were a handful of those that were resolved. But then some of them were, were somewhat repeated in the current year. But maybe again, like I said, but maybe just a different nuance on it based on how we analyzed a particular area. So.
Just a, a couple of follow-up questions with that. We watched, um, previous audits, um, have repeat comments that went on for four and five, um, years. My question to you is, what is your expectation as an auditor? Understanding that you cannot control what your client is doing. But what is your expectation to have these audit recommendations? Cleared up in, in a timeline? Do, do you, do you look at that? Do you put something out there that says, okay, I've reminded them of this? You know, two years in a row and I'm not seeing any improvement?
Right. No, great question. And, and, and yes, I mean, obviously what we try to do is, is we, we put comments down that we feel that we hope that our clients will take to heart and, and will, you know, take those and, and adopt processes and procedures to, to implement to get the, the items, um, taken care of. And, and what we try to do is, is we don't try to do those, when I would call pie in the sky type comments that are, you know, that are, that are, you know, so overburdened, some are so, so overarching that you could never implement. So the ones that we try to, you know, put out there for, for you to consider are ones that we really feel are important, you know, and, and do have a necessity to implement. Um, so yes, we, we look at them every year. We discuss them, you know, every year and we usually, you know, and, and we're already halfway through, you know, a little over halfway through the, you know, the current year. We would try to evaluate those partway through the, you know, the year, at least, you know, maybe this year we'll do three quarters of the way through the year, just because, you know, being our first year, um, doing this, but just kind of sitting down with, um, the finance office and, and, and kind of getting a feeling for how are you coming on implementation? And like you said, it might not be a one, a one-year thing. It might take a year or two, you know, and, and, but what we're looking for are or is improvement, you know? And, and so that improvement is, we have, we have eight comments in the, in the financials this year. The hope would be, you know, is, is like I said, we're already over halfway through the year. We wouldn't expect there to be zero next year, but could we see six, five, you know, or something like that? That's what we look for, um, is, is improvement on a, on an annual basis. And, and then obviously, we would continue to talk to, to, uh, US counsel and, and so forth to, to present those to be able to say, you know, we had eight last year and, and, you know, that's something, I mean, I had, it just says a, as a, you know, minor story. I mean, the, one of my first clients, uh, or first times we did an audit, we had thirty-six comments in like this in, in the letter. And each year they knocked off, you know, a handful of those comments and, and by about the fifth or sixth year, I think of conducting that audit, they were at zero. And so, um, so you know, that's what we're looking for is improvement, you know? And so that's what I would expect to see. And, and if there's anything that we can assist, um, I think now that you have, you know, we don't, I don't know the individuals that were in, you know, the finance office before, but now you have continuity, I think, in, in the finance office and, and we've had a good, you know, uh, working relationship to get through this audit process with them. Um, and, and so if there's ever anything that, you know, needs assistance through that process, you know, we're always there to, to be able to, you know, to assist in that process and, and and offer our suggestions or recommendations as, as they move forward.
And my last question would be, are there any material reasons why council would have been told that we would end up in our reserves rainy day fund, whatever we want to call it? Roughly around $6 million, but when the audit was completed, that we're at 10 million. I mean, that's a substantial change from what we were led to believe in September and where we ended up when the audit was completed.
What I can tell you is, is, and let me stop sharing this and I will try my, my second at bat with, um, sharing the actual audit report. Okay. And how'd I do? Can you see that? Awesome. Okay. Um, so just to show you, we'll go way to the back and, and I, I don't know all of the specifics on, on, on your question, but what I can, what I can show you is, um, is I gotta find a page number here where I'm at. Okay, um, is the information that we had for the audit process and so forth. Was, let's apologize for talking and trying to talk and find at the same time, but, um, here we go. Um, so here is, uh, looking at the general fund and, and, and I think that's what, you know, what we were talking about or what your question was related to. And so, so looking at this and, and as we, as we look at this, this is what's called the statement of revenues expenditures and changes in fund balance. So kind of the income statement for the general fund. And, um, you know, as we look at the numbers here, your final amended budget, 134 million for revenues. Total revenues came in at 133 million. So pretty close. You know, you're a little bit shy, but, but not, you know, almost about a half a million dollars shy on, on total revenues. But then as we scroll down, you know, we have expenditures and so forth. Getting here towards the tail end, you know, from what we, what we were provided as far as the budget, what we could see was the, the expectation was a, a utilization of fund balance. This $3 million, as you can see right here. So the expectation would have been, if you would have been spot on with the, with the budget to actual is you had $3 million planned usage of fund balance. You started the year with 10 million. And so therefore you would have ended roughly at, you know, this, this 6.9 million dollars. So does that, does that kind of make sense of where maybe you, at least your expectations were?
Councilmember Wood, um, would you like me to have, I think the fin, I see the finance director here. Do you want me to have him address that or?
Yes, I think that would be very good. Thank you.
Very good. Um, Mr. Wittigan, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I'm sure you heard Councilmember Wood's question. If not, I'll ask her to repeat it.
Uh, no, I, I was able to hear the question. So the, so our budget, the main reason for staying flat, you know, you can see on Steve's screen there. It's showing an increase in fund balance of approximately $89,520. And, and the primary reason is departmental expenditures were down in our parks and rec department, fire department and police department. From talking to our budget director, when doing the budget, the 6.9 came by the finance department erring on the side of caution when it came to estimating expenditures. So basically a conservative approach, given the assumptions we had, uh, before us at that time. Uh, so then like I said, uh, thanks to the parks, parks and rec, LPD and LFD, their, uh, the departmental expenditures came in well under, uh, what we have budgeted at the time.
Okay, but we were given numbers in September when we were discussing retiree healthcare that led us to believe that the rainy day fund had gone down or reserve fund, you know, again, whatever name you want to put on it. We were down to roughly between, um, 6.6 to 6.5 million dollars. And then here we see in December, which is, you know, just a few months after that, that we're seeing that actually we had 10 million. I, I'm trying to get the logic of how we were telling council and the public two different numbers.
So, uh, uh, again, at, at that time, um, uh, that, those were the best available numbers we had at that, at that time when we were making those, uh, discussions with, with retirees.
Yeah. And speaking from the, uh, budget perspective, uh, we didn't want to give you numbers that were unconfirmed at that time. And so at the time we were discussing the retiree changes, uh, the only confirmed numbers that we had at that point were what we had budgeted for that year. And so that was a 6.9 numbers. Since that discussion, we now have the audit completed and the number is now at about 10.1. And so that's an improvement from our expectations. However, we still have our structural deficit when looking at the fiscal year 2021, where we are still planning to go down about 4 million in fund balance.
Not disagreeing with you about that. What I'm disagreeing, what I, what I find alarming and disc, and discerning is the fact that those numbers and what we've been told and, um, without any, um, additional information saying, okay, we don't have an actual audit done, but this is the range that we're seeing come in because of reduction in expenditures. So that's my statement on that. Thank you. I'm done. President Spatafor.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Uh, thank you, Mr. Brower, uh, Mr. Wittigan for weighing in. Um, I do see a question from Councilmember Spitzley related to the audit, uh, or the audit. So go ahead, Councilmember Spitzley.
Yeah, I have, I have several questions. So if, um, the finance director and the budget director can, could stay around, that would be helpful for me. So I want to follow up, um, before I start my actual, actual questions. I want to follow up on some questions that Councilmember Woods, started on. So when you made the, the decision or you guys did the discussions to change, um, the, the, um, healthcare on retirees and some other things, you made those decisions based on unconfirmed numbers? Is that what I'm hearing from Jake?
We've made those, uh, decisions, uh, based not only on our budgeted numbers, which had been appropriated by, uh, yourselves, the council, uh, but also long-term financial projections looking forward.
Correct.
Uh, along with the uncertainties of, of being in a pandemic, uh, and the available fund reserves we have to weather additional crises in the future.
Oh, okay. Great. So what, what, what did you, when you said, um, decisions were based on unconfirmed numbers, what did you exactly mean by that?
We made no decisions based off of unconfirmed numbers. Uh, we based our decisions and the information we provided on the best available information at that time. And so at that time, uh, the audit was yet to be finished. And so we did not report those figures to you until the audit had been completed and were able to, uh, say with confidence, this is where we had ended the fiscal year. Until then, we had taken the final adopted budget by this council and use those numbers as the baseline for analysis.
Right. So, so the budget, when, when we present the budget, that's a snapshot in time. Theoretical science using the best data that we have before us at that time. The audit then comes in and, and audits, for lack of a better word, those numbers and gives you a final snapshot of where you finally ended the year.
Okay. Did I misunderstand? I'm sorry then. I must have misunderstood what you're saying because I thought, I thought that's what you said. Because I thought you said you, those numbers based, you, you did that based on unconfirmed numbers. So that, that's why I wanted to follow up on that.
That's, sorry for the confusion there.
President Spatafor, a point of, a point of order on, on this. To the finance director, based on the question that, um, Councilmember Spitzley said, he made the comment that, um, based on the, um, information that council passed, remember, and again, this is informational, remember that we're, we're going on the numbers you give us. We don't create those numbers. You give us those numbers. So I just want that clarified for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. So my, my second question following up on what Councilmember Wood said was, can you, um, tell me what the savings were in fire and police? I mean, did they save it with hiring freezes? I mean, what exactly were the basis of those, those savings in both police and fire?
Before I, uh, move on to Jake or, or Rob, uh, Mr. Mayor, you turned your video on, so I wasn't sure if you wanted to say something or not. I'm happy to continue the dialogue. I just, your camera came out, so I didn't know if there was something you wanted to add related to this.
I had to step away, so I just joined, but
Oh, okay.
I heard the backend and I mean, this is the, the budgeted numbers versus the actual numbers is what I understand is the conversation.
Okay. Then I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt Jake and Rob if you want to go.
Yeah. I don't have a full list in front of me. I know with the police and, uh, fire departments, I remember some vacancy savings being in there, but I would have to look, uh, deeper in order to provide you an accurate answer on this question.
And then, um, so, um, Eric, last year, Eric, um, Mr. Brewer provided us with a, um, well, let me back up and ask the auditor, can you tell me what the, um, definition of a material weakness is?
Right. So, uh, material weakness definition, I mean, there's, there's two different kinds of what I would call findings. You know, in that, in that letter that we had up there and, and there's a, um, a definition that's, that's in that letter too. But I mean, basically, those are the higher level of issues that we find as we go through the audit process. There's, um, kind of basic other issues. There's what we call significant deficiencies. And then the, I hate to use the word worse, but the highest level of, of, of finding that we have there is, is called that material weakness.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate that. So, so as I'm looking at, um, last year, January 30th, and I, if I'd have thought about it, I would have asked him for the same thing. Mr. Brewer put together, um, a document that set forth, um, repeat comments, um, for the, for the audits from the past five or six years.
Okay.
And, um, one of the things that continues to be a material weakness according to what, you know, what, what you're, what the auditors are saying and according to what I'm looking at under Mr. Brewer. You know, our, our, um, our pension and OPEB activity. You know, we've had repeat, uh, concerns, material weaknesses for the past, since 2014. Um, and we also have the same. And so we've also have, you know, a number of repeat ones over for bank reconciliation and material general injuries. It's pretty, pretty significant. I mean, those give us a snapshot of, you know, the dollars, the folks that are on our retirement rolls and it kind of guides us in actions we take from a financial standpoint. And so, you know, I, I do recall at least what the time I've been on council. Our continued, um, concern about these type of repeat, repeat material weaknesses and how they impact what we're, what we're doing and how we're able to provide services. And so, for example, bank reconciliations, um, you know, some of the recommendations you, you put forth, like you said, you put forth at least three, you know, a number of recommendations. So what I'm asking, what I'd like to answer either Rob or, um, Jake is when can we expect an update on the status of these recommendations?
Yeah, I, I appreciate that, uh, comment. Um, so we've initially, once we got this report, we started working, uh, internally with staff to, to kind of lay out a plan to start addressing these, these findings. So it's our goal to work with administration, council, uh, glad to have Eric Brewer back. We've had a couple of conversations on this. And, and directors to eliminate the findings, you know, as we can between now and the next CAFER. So I, I can't sit here and say we're going to go from eight to zero between now and, and next audit, CAFER, but, uh, I can tell you that we're going to keep you and the internal auditor in the loop. And, uh, I mean, ultimately the timeline is dependent on our resources and, and what, you know, fires, for lack of a better term, come before us. But, uh, I, I can tell you now, I take these comments to heart. I know Jake takes these comments to heart. And bottom line, we look forward to working with manner and the internal auditor to reduce these. I'd like to see two or three off, off the list by next year.
And, and I appreciate that. Thank you for saying that. I, I guess, um, you know, as we're looking at the pension And I appreciate that. Thank you for saying that. I guess, you know, as we're looking at the pension and the OPAD activity and we're, you know, we're exploring ways to save money and address our liabilities, including, you know, you know, the activities that we've had in the past, you know, few months with our retirees and changing retiree healthcare. I'm just, I'm just a little stunned that we continue to have material weaknesses as it relates to our pension and OPAD activity. And so I, I'm really, I, I, that's one that I would really like to have, you know, an update on how you're going to address these. Keep in mind, you know, it's not, you know, so I'm not, I'm not really on your case.
Right.
Because this has gone on for the last six years where we've had a material deficiency in this, in this, in this issue. And so it's critically important, I think, that we need to have an accurate representation of, you know, what we're looking at on, on all of this. But as, as it relates to our retiree and our, and our, um, our pension activities, simply because we've asked them, you know, to take a hit on, you know, their healthcare and some other things. And so I'm just asking that we, you know, look at this and look at this material weakness. This isn't a, this isn't a, a significant deficiency because, which is a step lower than I understand than a material weakness. This is a material weakness. This is very serious. And so I would like, I would hope that next year, this time, when we come back, that these material weaknesses that we've seen repeated for the last six years would be the first things that are, that are addressed. And we can have some progress on how we're going to address these.
Yeah, I think that's perfect. And I, I agree with what you're saying fully. I left one important key player off the list. And that's, that's, you know, the city CSO, she's doing a great job and we'll definitely include her in conversations with Mr. Brewer and Steve from Manor, the rest of the finance team to try to, lack of a better term, hit the side of the park.
Great analogy for the evening, Rob. So before we move on, Carol, Councilmember, I see your hand. I see the mayor was waving his hand too. So Mr. Mayor, go for it. And then we'll go to Councilmember Wood as soon as, I'm sure Councilmember Spitzley is finished.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind that, that, you know, the retiree healthcare changes that were made are significant at 3 million a year, but with the $700 million legacy costs that are outstanding, we're going to continue to have material issues on this until something greater happens. Now, you know, we, we had initial recommendations and many members of this council and the retirees didn't like it. And, and we worked with our unions to make sure we got to a place that everybody could agree with. But as we move forward, again, Judy is going to be working with all parties to try and find some solutions. And we need to find some solutions. This is going to continue to be a material weakness until we're able to come up with solutions. You know, it's not 10 million a year in savings. It's 3 million a year, which is still 78 to 80 million dollars, which is still significant. But, but I invite any member of council that's interested in working on that material weakness to, to work with us along with the unions, along with retirees. This is one of Judy's top missions really is to try and come up with further solutions to this issue. So this is going to continue to be an issue and it has been for many years since, since the legacy costs kind of ballooned. And we'll continue to work on that, but I welcome anybody here to join.
And I, and I agree with that. And I appreciate the offer. I think that as I look at the auditor's report, you know, some of the things that we can do, you know, right now are the record keep, the type of record keeping and internal controls and procedures that give you, I think, a better snapshot of what we're looking at. And I, that's kind of what I, I know that the, the 700 million is, is something that, you know, you know, we, it is just crushing and we have to deal with. But as we look at some of these internal control procedures and some of the stuff that's, that's addressed in the auditor's report, I think that that would go a long way to assist our financial team, including, you know, Jake and Eric and our CSO to understanding, you know, the, the layout of the land. And that, that's what I'm talking about. As, as, as it relates to that, these, these, the audit does talk about some specific internal controls and things that we need to beef up so that we have a better understanding of what we're looking at. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Are you all set, Councilmember Spitzley? Very good. Thank you very much. Councilmember Wood?
I just wanted to add for Councilmember Spitzley's information, and I might've said this at the last audit, because these issues have come up about the pension and boards and getting the information to the actuary, actuary on, in a timely manner. Both boards have passed policies that require that the information be given to the actuarial from the finance department in June. And it's my understanding that this was not something that the finance department, the new people, the finance department were aware of. And so it was something that didn't get done. Now, the prior finance director was aware of it and still had trouble getting it to them in a, in a timely manner. So it is something from the board's perspective that we hope we can get a handle on and making sure that that information is provided in a timely manner. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Jackson, see your hand.
Yes, thank you. Just one question. Can anybody tell us, based on the best information available, how long the city can survive financially? Based on the current projections?
So actually, that's a great question, Councilmember Jackson. I don't know who wants to take it, but I am, I, I think one thing that might be useful is for us to have a long-term sort of outlook on projections. And I, I'm willing to add that to, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
I didn't want to cut you off because I think you were going to the same place I am.
Okay.
And for those who, who follow kind of the state, they do a consensus revenue estimating conference every year. We are talking about with the council president's approval and the council's approval, trying to come to this council early before presenting the budget, maybe even the next meeting, Mr. President, if there's time to bring some kind of, in essence, forecast. So that way you all can see what we're looking at a little bit before we present the budget. In the past, it seems the tradition has been that we present a budget and then tell you how much, well, for the first two years, how much additional revenue we have and last year, how much we were in the hole. So I think we're going to try and bring you some kind of projections, maybe even February 23rd. So you've got a month to see those and digest those before we present our budget. So Councilman Jackson, you'll have an idea of where we're at. I can't say how many years until we go bankrupt, if that's what you're asking. Hopefully, you know, our intention is not to have that happen. But there will be, right, thanks, Rob. But there will be, you know, a, a revenue estimate, estimate, and then our budget and then the budget that you pass. So it's, we're going to try and add a step at least for this year, if that's okay with the president and council.
Well, I'm looking at referrals for next COW and we don't have a lot. So I think that would be a good thing to do at COW next on the, when is that, the 22nd? You said the 23rd. I think it's 22nd. But sorry. So Councilmember Jackson, I, I'll let you see if you're, if you, if that came close to answering your question, but that's something I want to know is sort of the long-term revenue outlook. And I know, I don't think the mayor at least was prepared to answer that question. But Steve, if you, he's thinking no. So, but
He's the record keeper of the, of the
Right, exactly.
So I can, I can tell you, but yeah, the projection, no, I think the mayor's, you know, I think that
Jake or Rob, is there a better answer than that? But I want to make sure Brian gets his question answered, or I'm sorry, Councilmember Jackson gets his question answered.
No, I think that's a, a good plan to kind of follow the state's model to give you guys a heads up, council head, you know, here, here's, let's go over projections. Then let's go into budget time. Because, you know, I'm new and we're still getting used to each other here. And, you know, I finance wants you, wants you to have the best picture available when making these decisions. So.
And we're in the middle of the process of developing the 22 budget, which you have in front of you and just over a month.
Councilmember Jackson, does that help? Or is, it doesn't sound like we're going to get a, like a, an end date today.
It would be, you would think that we would have some clue like 10 years, 20 years, but it's fair enough that they're working on it and going to present something within this month.
Does anyone have an objection to that ad being added to the count next in two weeks? Okay, I think that's a great, that's a great step in helping. I, this is a weird year. I know it's even for those of you who've been around for a while, we're not really sure what, you know, what the budget's going to really do, given COVID and everything and American Rescue Plan and RA3 or whatever. So if that's all right, I think I'd like to move on from that unless, from that question. And then we'll, we'll, we'll address it in a revenue projection presentation in two weeks. But do you have other questions, Councilmember Jackson? Okay, thanks for bringing that up. Appreciate it. Are there other questions for the team assembled before we move on? All right, seeing none. We're going to thank you all for that. And we are going to move on, but I would like to, does anyone have any questions on items C through H that are all just motions to place on file before we head up, head into the TMO agreement? I know that's going to take up a lot of time. All right. So Mr. Vice President, I think we need to take some motions to place on file. I haven't done this in a while here.
All right. I, I believe that to be the case too. I would move to place on file the City of Lansing 2021 annual report.
Might I advise that we move them all as
Do you want to move them together?
That would be awesome.
All right. I would move them that we, and it, do you want me to read them into the record?
Yeah, that would be great, please, yes.
Okay. So in terms of the motion, we'll be including the City of Lansing 2021 annual report, the 2020 CAFER, financial statements for Lansing Building Authority, Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, both fiscal year 2020, financial statements for the tax increment, finance authority or TIF, which is fiscal year 2020, and financial statements for the Tri-County Metro Narcotics Squad, again, for fiscal year 2020. I would move that we place all of the foregoing on file.
Very good. There is a motion before us. I don't see questions. So Cherry, could you please call the role on placing those items on file?
Councilmember Jackson?
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar?
Yes.
Councilmember Garza?
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein?
Yes.
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley?
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor?
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0.
All right, folks, time to play ball. We are going to now discuss the Second Amendment to the Stadium License Lease Service Agreement with Take Me Out to the Ballgame LLC. And honestly, I have no idea how we're going to start this conversation, but to say, Mr. Mayor, you want to set it up? Okay, that sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, I can do that. So just so everybody knows, we've been doing a lot of work on this since the meeting two weeks ago. I know it was, it was not the best presentation.
Mr. Mayor, you're gonna, your audio is in and out, either maybe come closer or dialing off the phone would be great, just in case.
Can you hear me now? Is this better? Trying to get closer to the mic. No? All right, let me dial in. Oh, can you hear me?
Yeah, just stay right there.
Okay. So as I was saying, sort of, you know, two weeks ago, we gave an initial presentation, which did not have
All right, let's, let's go for, can you, can you dial in, sir? Thank you. Appreciate it. Sorry for the technical difficulties.
Can someone read me the number?
Yeah. How do we do that?
301 715 8592. And your median ID is 859 4003 6219.
And then down at the bottom of your screen where you have your audio, click switch to phone audio and it'll give you a participant ID to link your audio and video.
All right, say that again.
Down at the bottom where you can turn on, there's a, your microphone, you can say switch to phone audio. And when you do that, it will give you your participant ID so that you can link your phone and your, your video. I've become very good at this over the last 11 months. It's going on my resume. How was everyone's weekend?
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. So
Yeah, turn, turn your audio off on your computer and then just use the phone. Like mute your audio. I could just, you know, I could come down there.
I was going to say, it might've been quicker. My apologies, everyone. I'm using an older computer and clearly the microphone stinks. So try again. We have been working on this quite a bit for the last two weeks. Clearly, the, the presentation we had two weeks ago was short on numbers. But I think right after the presentation, we sent you a ton of numbers. We got the information to Eric Brewer, as was requested by a few of you. And I know I had Councilwoman Dunbar contacted me Friday, I believe, and raised some, some good questions, I thought, some interesting ideas. So we, we worked on this throughout the weekend with Tom, with Tyler, with Bree, Rob on our team, Lisa Hagan, Jim, we, we really ran a lot of the numbers to figure out what could be the best deal for both the city and the team. As was sent to you by Mark, I don't know, middle of last week, there was a slight, it wasn't quite a, a neutral proposal we had. It was a slight hit to the city. And then Eric, actually Brewer, worked on it and identified a few other potential costs. So we kind of went back to, I wouldn't say we went back to the drawing board, but there were some changes that were made. Again, Councilwoman Dunbar proposed some things that we were able to negotiate. She came up with the idea of a substitute that I am supportive of and I'm willing to introduce as an administration substitute for the, for the resolution you had in front of you. So the, the proposal as it comes is now going to be revenue positive for the city. I think it's going to work for the team. I want one of our financial people, is Brian Lefler on? He was also very helpful working over the weekend. So either Brian or Rob can go through the actual numbers of the proposal. Tom and Tyler and I don't know if Bree is here, I think just Tom and Tyler, you guys can talk for the team and what works for the team. And then Kathy, I want you to weigh in on, on kind of what you identified, if you, if you don't mind, because you were extremely helpful in the process and you were, you, you caught a lot of this stuff. So I don't know who wants to go first. Kathy, you're the councilwoman if you want to.
Yep, sorry, before we do that, I see Councilmember Wood, is your question, are you putting your place first in line for questions later? Or do you have something to say now?
I have a question for you, President Spatafor.
Okay.
So President Spatafor, is it my understanding that at 4 o'clock today, this body received the information and now we're being asked by 7 o'clock this evening to pass this forward to a council meeting and to vote on this this evening?
So it's my understanding that, I think, timeline, you, you have things lined up correctly, yes. There is still the amendment that was in front of us two weeks ago that we could consider. I suppose there is the existing lease agreement and then there is what I believe are about to be shared with this evening.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Kathy, you want to?
Kathy?
If you want. I'm sorry, Mr. President, it's your show.
That's fine. Go ahead, Councilmember Dunbar.
Yeah, okay. All right. I mean, I can. Let me pull up on my screen what we're looking for. So there were a couple of different, when I started to dig into this and I had done it for several days last week, and it was after kind of working with some of the numbers when I called the mayor and asked if there was the ability to work with our financial folks and folks from the team to kind of massage this in a way that ends up in a positive way for the city. So there's a couple of assumptions that here that we're working from. One is that we were going to be, according to the proposal that we were sent, we were going to be in the negative no matter what. So we were, the, the condition that we were in with the current agreement, which we did not negotiate ourselves into a negative. We ended up in a negative because of the way that the MLB, Major League Baseball has, as a Major League Baseball has, as an agreement, um, that they're signing with the team, which requires one point two, um, million dollars of investment capital improvements um, in order for the team to um, fulfill their, their agreement and that falls on the city because that's our responsibility in the lease. So that ended up putting us in an, um, in a negative situation and the first um, or the, I guess the second draft amendment that you guys had from two weeks ago put us in, in, in a slightly worse position. Um, and this one here, one of the assumptions that was missing, maybe, um, I don't wanna say missing, I didn't, I didn't catch it either right away, is that one of the improvements that's required by the one point two in the million or the, the MLB agreement is uh, swapping out all the lights in the facility. So everything in the stadium has to be switched to LED lights. And so, um, one of the thoughts we had was, well, if, if that's gonna change, and one of the reasons we changed to LED is to save money. I called Border Water and Light, talked with Dick Puffley and asked him what the conservative savings would be for swapping that out and they, he gave me a pretty, I mean, it's half, um, at least half, it could be up to seventy-five percent depending on the type of lights that they put in. So right there, that changed the, uh, position into the positive for both the team and us because we split the utilities. So the savings that we would achieve, and I'm not gonna go into, if, if you guys are looking at any of the spreadsheets, you're welcome, I, I, I don't know that I, um, I, I wanna, I can dive into it, I don't have screen sharing right now, but it does save us a significant amount of money um, to do that. We also, when we discussed this, you know, the team, it's COVID, right? So they didn't have a season last year and, and, um, they needed some kind of relief moving in, moving forward. Um, because they had no, almost no revenue. And, and it's difficult even this year coming out of COVID, um, anticipating ticket sales and so um, we, we allowed for in, in, and I say there, thank you very much for sharing that. Um, we, we allowed for the fact that there is a force majeure clause in the contract. Um, rather than go to court and dispute it, we just, we, we made the allocation that we would waive the fee from last year because of COVID. Um, but also in the process, we negotiated down the minimum CIP requirements under the contract, so the city benefits as well from that. So there was give and take in both sides. Um, I can go into the numbers deeper. I've had Rob look at them all. Um, Eric has looked at them all, their CFO has looked at them all, we've, we, we agree that the numbers are accurate to the extent that we can, um, you know, estimate them based on past history and, um, there are some, there's some basic clauses maybe law wants to talk about as far as the assumptions that are listed in the footnotes, but in all, we end up in a far more positive position, the way that this works by the end of twenty thirty-eight, um, we're actually in a net positive position, um, of one point five nine seven million dollars for the, um, for that timeframe. So there's, there's a loss to the city from last year based on the lost revenue from the team. Um, but moving forward, it's almost consistently in the black and, um, I will stop speaking now because I'm probably working myself into a hole and let folks, um, kind of comment um, as they wish on the parts that they worked on, too.
Okay, um, Rob, why don't you go ahead and get started?
Okay, so, first I wanna sincerely thank, uh, Councilwoman Dunbar for spending essentially her entire weekend uh, negotiating, uh, and, and working on this proposal with city team, uh, and, and, and TMO. Um, the, the major highlights is, as Councilwoman stated, you know, the city is waiving uh, due to force majeure, you know, your, your twenty twenty season. Um, there's no overall changes to our DGR except for in twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-three, the city excludes the five percent annual payment of sponsorship revenue, uh, excluding, not, excluding, excluding the naming rights. So I think Tyler could correct me if I'm wrong, but your wall sponsorship. In twenty thirty-two, the five percent annual payment of sponsorship revenue that I just mentioned, uh, that, that comes back to the city. In the event the current naming rights expires or is terminated, TMO, uh, has agreed to pay the hundred and fifty thousand annually um, or, or one half the gross revenue. Not, this is not including, um, marketing and sales costs. City, you know, TMO, so city is gonna facilitate the refinancing of the, of the principal balance of the twenty fifteen IPA. TMO shall pay, they're gonna pay fifty percent of the actual final annual debt service. TMO will pay a hundred percent of the actual final debt service associated with any termination fee or cost of issuance. And TMO's payments are, are due thirty days before the payment date, um, of refinancing the twenty fifteen IPA. Uh, the city is going to facilitate, as Councilmember Dunbar mentioned, an IPA in an amount not to exceed, you know, one point two five million for additional financing for stadium improvements. Um, you know, this, this includes your LED lights where we're, we're looking to, to, to see fifty percent savings, uh, on the energy a, and that's on the city's and because of the fact, you know, the stadium's the city's asset. Uh, for twenty twenty, TMO will pay the, the hundred and twenty-five thou, uh, additional cash payment, you know, according uh, to, to a payment schedule. Uh, they're gonna, um, provide, and then for capital improvements, there's, you'll see the minimum and maximum. Uh, a minimum of thirty-seven thousand five hundred, maximum of five, fifty thousand for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. And then you can see the minimum remains at fifty thousand for twenty twenty-five through twenty thirty-eight. Uh, and then it goes up by two hundred and, uh, twenty-five hundred each year for maximum. Um, I think that summarizes the, the, the major points. Uh, and Tom Dixon from TMO is here also to talk on uh, some of the changes made and then, uh, OCA's here to talk about the, the resolution agreement before you.
OCA, why don't we go ahead and start with you? Jimmy, you're muted, don't just kind of.
Uh, yes, this has been a long process over the last several weeks and I, I just wanna commend Lisa Hagan, who you all know for her diligent work twenty-four hours a day over the weekend. Um, this is amazing.
Jim, before I do, before I, I'm sorry, before it's going, I just, I do wanna clarify, I wanna thank everyone for their work on this too, but just please be, uh, understanding with council members' questions, you know, I, we receive these at about four o'clock today, so I wanna make sure that everyone understands that these details are relatively new to, uh, most of us, so please be very diligent and explain it to us as if we haven't looked at this before.
So we have a current, and again, I, I think you all know, I did the original agreement back in ninety-four. I didn't do the last two. Come back and look at what we have, we have an agreement that goes to three thou, or twenty thirty-four. And it has this concept called DGR in it, uh, which is a combination. We took all the revenue sources back in nineteen ninety-four and then came up with percentages and how that, how the city would share the revenue. Uh, so the, the DGR is going to stay and it's, uh, DGR has like concessions and marketing and tickets and there's a whole number, parking, there's like six items that are in there. So that we're staying, we have that in the agreement right now, but because of what is happening with the change in the ma- uh, Major League Baseball in the minor leagues, some adjustments were requested by the London's. Um, you mentioned some of them were the capital improvements and all that type of thing. Lisa, I, I want you to address, by the way, we don't have the actual Second Amendment because the negotiations continued up to today. Um, but we have a bullet list in a resolution of the changes. And we can then do the agreement after, if you want to decide to approve the resolution, the city attorney has to sign off on the final contract, so I can guarantee you that whatever's in that resolution is going to be in the final agreement. But, um, the major person who's been working legally on this is Lisa, so I wanna, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, can I turn this over to Lisa to talk about the agreements?
Yes, please, thank you.
Sure, thank you, Jim, I appreciate that. Um, so I'm just gonna go through the resolution, um. It essentially, uh, recall that this agreement, the Stadium License Lease and Service Agreement started in twenty fourteen. And then also in twenty fourteen, there was a First Amendment. The First Amendment was done because some stadium improvements were needed that ended up costing essentially more than, than all parties had thought. And so it, uh, allowed for an installment purchase agreement and it required TMO to assist in paying, uh, at least fifty or fifty percent of the interest or one hundred and twenty-five thousand. So this agreement, um, modifies both of those. It modifies both the original two thousand fourteen and the First Amendment. Because, as folks have already mentioned here, um, there's a new uh, obligation for the city to make significant stadium improvements to the tune of one point two five million. So, um, with the work of our finance folks and Brian Lefler from Baird, the decision was made, um, to go out for an installment purchase agreement, not to exceed the one point two five million. So, that's the biggest change in the First Amendment. Moving forward, TMO will continue to pay, um, the agreement is changing to fifty percent of the interest. Um, rather than splitting, you know, either or fifty percent or the one hundred and twenty-five K. Um, most of these financial figures and financial aspects of this deal, Rob has kind of taken you through already, I'm sorry, the Finance Director, Mr. Witit, Whitigan has taken you through already, so I don't wanna, um, kind of repeat anything that he said. Um, I think it's important to note that, uh, DGR, uh, is a number of things, as the city attorney mentioned, it does not include parking. However, parking is the city's revenue in the two thousand fourteen agreement and it maintains that revenue in this second, proposed Second Amendment. It does not change that. Um, so with the DGR format, we would still get generally five percent of the DGR unless, um, TMO has much more revenue, I think it's four million, somewhere in there, we would get, uh, seven point five percent of the DGR. Um, the naming rights agreement that is currently on, uh, in place with Jackson is staying the same, that's a separate agreement. However, this agreement would allow us to guarantee a minimum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the event that, um, in twenty thirty-four, when Jackson's current deal is set to expire, um, it kind of just gives us a, a monetary guarantee of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars moving forward. Um, one thing that I don't think was mentioned or was mentioned only very briefly is that um, for twenty twenty, there's both the minimum guaranteed payment, which has been discussed that the city is proposing to waive pursuant to a force majeure event. However, there is the one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar payment that the city is owed on the additional cash payment pursuant to the First Amendment. Um, TMO in the proposed Second Amendment has agreed to make that one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar payment. Um, it's proposed to be spread over a ten-year period beginning this year in twenty twenty-one um, with interest payments of two point three five percent. Um, also in the agreement, um, currently, the city's Finance Director is um, authorized to receive certain information, financial materials pertaining to, um, an audit of DGR. Um, this agreement includes the internal auditor in receiving that information so that the, this council can be fully informed. Um, and it also purports that TMO, uh, provide copies to the city of any and all financial audits produced by and for TMO. Um, and obviously the, the other provisions of the audit section in the agreement are proposed to stay in place, so to the extent legally permissible, they would be confidential. Um, but I guess you never really, you know, there's, boy, yeah, there's other things that, that could happen. Um, those are the, those are the real big changes to this agreement. We're proposing to extend it for years. So currently, the agreement ends, uh, December thirty-first, twenty thirty-four and this would extend the agreement to December thirty-first of twenty thirty-eight. And obviously I am available in here if there are specific questions anyone would like me to address.
Uh, Patricia, I mean, Council, I see your hand, I ca- I may, I, do you mind if I ask a question real quick about sort of the deadline that we have been told we're under? What is the deadline? Why does that, I, I mean, I know there's something to do with Major League Baseball, but what's the, forgive me, I didn't even watch the Super Bowl, so can someone explain to me what the deadline is, why, why that's so pressing?
Sure.
We, because we currently have a lease that goes through twenty thirty-four to begin with, correct?
That is correct.
Yes, maybe, maybe you should let Mr. Dixon answer.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Mr. Dixon?
Oh, sorry, um, Councilman Spatterford, I'd be happy to answer the question. I, I might suggest there's somebody on the call that could do it better than I can, which is the President of our, of the Midwest League, which is the league we play in. Um, Mr. Nussbaum, or if you want, if you're, if you allow him to do it, he might be better, or I'd be happy to.
Yeah, yeah, if Mr. Nussbaum is, is here, if City TV could please move him in while we wait for that, um, Councilmember Spitzley, uh, I just did that thing that checked in on you after you took a bite, so we can come back in just a minute unless you're ready.
Now, I, I have, I do have, um, question that maybe Lisa can answer.
Okay.
You talked about, um, the force majeure provision and then was it a hundred and twenty thousand dollar payment or a hundred thousand dollar payment that we agreed to extend, um, over ten years? Can you, can you give me just a little bit more information about both of those two?
Yes, absolutely. So the force majeure payment that this agreement or this amendment proposes to waive um, is a waiver of the minimum guaranteed payment for the, the license fee that TMO pays to the city each year through DGR. So you have DGR, which is all of your forms of revenue, but there is in this agreement a minimum guaranteed payment of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, if the, you know, that we receive every year. However, there are two provisions in this agreement, um, that were affected by the, the COVID nineteen cancellation of the season. There's the force majeure clause which says that, you know, if there is an event beyond the party's control that affects the ability of TMO to play home baseball games, that those payments are paused. And then there's another section, um, called the destruction of stadium section that specifically speaks to, um, canceling the amount due proportional for the time that the TMO was unable to use the stadium. So the, the dispute that, that the city and the, and TMO has is exactly what amount is owed and how do we, you know, make that, um, how do we get to an agreement there? So, um, like Councilwoman Dunbar mentioned, rather than, you know, go to the courts and litigate the issue of exactly how much was owed in twenty twenty, um, we found a way to wrap it into this agreement and make a concession but also, um, have some other things that, that save the city some money on the other end.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
I might add to what Lisa said that the, uh, TMO actually, uh, sent us a notice back in, oh, I would say fall of 2020. This is not a new issue. We've had, we've had that issue on the plate and tried to negotiate it, and it's ending up being negotiated in this agreement. So they have a, they asserted that claim against us back in fall. Just so you know, it's not, didn't come out of the blue.
And I appreciate that. I, this is the first I've heard about the force majeure clause. So I I appreciate that you guys have been dealing with it. I I guess for me, and and I, and I understand, so, but, you know, what other what concessions are we giving to other small businesses in the city of Lansing that have been impacted by COVID? And so for, I, I, I personally are, am having, I'm struggling with that because we have, we have a lot of businesses in the city that are struggling that have closed. And I'm not quite sure we're giving other than, and I know we've done these small business grants. I get that. But I want to make sure that we're consistent across the board. And so that, that's given me a little bit of heartburn. And so I'm just, I'm just throwing that out. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nussbaum, I think the question that I had outstanding was what's the deadline and why does it exist?
The the deadline is is this Wednesday, February 10th, which is the deadline for a TMO and every other team that's been invited to be a professional development licensee, which is number 120, to sign the the document. And within that document, which is, you know, 105 pages long with exhibits. If there is an amendment to a lease, Major League Baseball is required to be part of that process. So I think in in this February 10th deadline came up probably in the middle of January. On December the 9th, TMO and every other invitee from Major League Baseball got a letter on December 9th. They said, you want to be, you want to be a PDL. And we'll get you the documents afterwards. So TMO and 119 other entities said, well, you know, they don't have much choice. If they don't sign this, then they'll go on to somebody else. You might recall that there's, there were 160 teams. Now there's 120. So the the supply was less than the demand. And so Major League Baseball had a lot of leverage. So we waited over a month to get the actual document. The actual document arrived right around January 12th or 13th. As I said, 105 pages long. And within the document was this February 10th deadline. And immediately at that point, TMO and the city began discussions and actually began discussions before that because we knew, we didn't know when the PDL was coming. But we knew that we would have a short period of time within which to do a deal without having Major League Baseball involved. So.
I guess, okay, so that's my question. I don't mean to diminish any of the work that's gone in this weekend, and I think that there's been a lot that's been done to make this, this, the position of the city better. But personally, I'm not comfortable. I I I see other hands, so I'll stop in just a minute. But I I'm not comfortable with not having a a legal document in front of us. And I guess the if we don't do this by the February 10th deadline, we just have to involve another person in the negotiations and take a little bit more time. Is that, is that what you're telling me?
Well, I
We're not losing, we're not losing Major League Baseball or the Lugnuts if this, if this takes a couple extra weeks, right?
Well, it, you know, there's no guarantee that Major League Baseball is going to come in here and not try to to start over. You know, you you lose control somewhat. So, you know, you know, if you don't want to do it today and the February 10th passes, then, you know, you'll just have to deal with Major League Baseball, too. That may not be a bad thing. It may not be a good thing.
Okay, I just want to clarify. I mean, I I totally appreciate what you're saying, and I I get that. But February 10th is a deadline that doesn't mean everything blows up. It just means that there are different sets of circumstances under which we're operating.
No, that I, I don't mean to say it blows up, but I, but I, what I am saying is that after that date, TMO is going to have to notify Major League Baseball that there is a lease amendment that is in, that is being negotiated. And they have to become much more directly involved.
So and because like 119 other teams didn't, didn't rush in two weeks to renegotiate their leases. Am I correct?
Well, a lot of teams did, frankly. South Bend did already. Columbia, South Carolina did, Dayton, Ohio did. Lots of teams did, yes. 119, no, but a lot of teams did.
Okay, thank you. First up, I see is Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. So I want to support an agreement that it sounds like the city administration and the Lugnuts TMO, for the most part, support. It's just that, a couple of things. One is given that, you know, we have people within a quarter mile or so from Lugnut Stadium, sleeping outside tonight and all these other nights. And as a city, we can't really cover them. And I wonder, did Lugnuts TMO, did you guys have any insurance for COVID? I mean, as far as your loss of revenues, that's just a question I'm wondering, because the city sure hasn't had anything yet. But also, if I can just have someone answer, based on the best information, whether or not over this 17 years until 2038, whether Lansing will be up, down, approximately how much, approximately how close? And if we can't tell, why can't, what's like the variable that we can't determine that on? Just because I would hate to agree to something that ultimately costs the city when times are so tough and people are sleeping outside.
Well, I I certainly don't want to
Mr. Nussbaum, I'm sorry, I don't think that, I mean, you're welcome to answer, but I don't think that was.
I I won't answer if you don't want to.
That was, I don't think that one was directed at you. Kathy, I saw your hand go up, but there may be, okay, go ahead.
If I, I'm sorry. I was just going to answer the first question, which I I can answer quickly. No, we had, we had no insurance.
Okay. Kathy?
Okay, so a couple of things I will try to cover. Yes, we are making an issue here out of the COVID. But in the process of negotiating the reduction in the mandatory or or I guess it is, you know, mandatory outside of force majeure, 350 minimum payment for lease, we have negotiated down the minimum capital investment required over time. So we have basically for that 17 years, for the first two years, there's no capital improvement dollars needed on our side that would have normally been in the budget because of the mandated 1.25 that's coming in. We know that some of the improvements are going to be covered under that pot of money, so it will not have to come out of our general fund. And then the payments after that are reduced. So in the original agreement, the minimum capital improvements for that entire timeframe were $100,000 a year. Right now, they're nothing for the first two years, 37,500 for the next two years, and then $50,000 each year after that. The maximum capital improvements were staggered up. They were based on the I supposed 3% cost of living increase, so not much more than than the 50 that was there. So that saved us a lot of money. So in 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 regard to, yes, it, the concession is that they are going to get a break on that fee from this year because of COVID. But that became a negotiating tool for us to negotiate down, you know, we're, we're saving $100,000. Well, $50,000 every year for 17 years, which is, it's, it's a good savings. And the 125 that they they owed us for 2020, they're still paying it. It's just going to be financed, and they're paying the city the interest on the delayed payment. So we will make money off of that and and it gives them the break that they need for the cash flow in the short term for for what's happening with MLB. I hope I explained that correctly. Oh, and and Brian, your question was, where are we at the end of the year? If you pull up this spreadsheet, you know, there is a shortfall for 2020 because of the loss in revenue. I, it's, this is going to be tough to do, but it's so. If you guys can see, thank, thank you very much. Thank you, whoever's got the cursor there. So you can see that there's a red loss in revenue in column W of the sheet. It's actually column AJ. If you look at the actual spreadsheet, but column W for our purposes, there is a shortfall there for last year. And and then pretty much every year after that, we're in the black all the way down. And and we're more in the black on this proposal than we were on the original or the first. This is going to sound the first second amendment, the original second amendment. So the city is in the positive with this, which is where we wanted to be.
Thank you. I mean, I guess that's what I'm looking for. And, you know, I just hope we can rely on those things. And unless somebody can explain how we can't rely on that or we're going to be in the red, I'd be more likely to support it.
May I, may I just point out that I've had Mr. Whitigan and Mr. Lefler and Eric have all looked at it. And Eric, would you, would you guys mind if Eric spoke to his validation of the numbers?
Eric, if you wanted to weigh in, I don't know if he's still here. There he is.
Yep. No, it's like I said, it's I did analysis, obviously, that you got through email from, from the first information that was given to me by Brian. And then I noticed some issues with that in on the second agreement. And obviously, the proposal that Kathy's give is a lot better than the second agreement that was proposed. And with the additional changes, actually appears better than the first agreement that's in place. Because what happens is, like Kathy was saying, the CIPs, the minor, the the was reduced, which serves the revenue increase. And then in addition to that, they kept the DGR the the same, only with the 5% reduction for the subscription revenue or sponsorship revenue. And then also what it is, I addressed with Kathy, the biggest thing is the minimum guaranteed payment is still within the DGR. So in other words, the city of Lansing is always going to get 350,000. Where the original agreement or the second amendment agreement basically had a fat fleet. And it it was, it was, you had a major reduction for the current agreement to the proposed agreement. And that was substantial loss. It was not, it was not cost neutral. And I credit everybody that took apart and reviewed the information. They concurred with some of the analysis I did, some of the analysis they provided to concur that. So based on my information, based on using the assumptions, and like I said, it is important to note, these are estimates. You know, this, we're taking the best information available and making a projection of what is going to happen in the future. And it's just like the CAFR, it can be change on a dime because, you know, how long does COVID, vice versa? But if we use the same information that's provided in the spreadsheet, it does appear that this agreement is better, the second amendment of the rise in agreement that was submitted by Kathy is better than the first agreement and better than the, obviously, the one that was submitted that was up for your vote. So like I said, now, the only bad thing is the timeframe, you know. But we, I think everybody did due course to do the best they could with the limited timeframe in analyzing the numbers. And like I said, is, but you ultimately, it falls on you guys to make the the hard choices. So I'll, I'm done with my response.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. I really appreciate the work that you've, you've put in. I know that you worked overtime on this one. So I I saw your time sheet. So why don't we start with Brian Jackson, Councilmember Jackson? Were you all set? Are you set with?
Yeah, I mean, Eric says he, with the time he has, supports those numbers for the most part. So I'm all set with my question.
And I would just like to clarify, too. I know you, I know what you meant, but Eric is neutral on the proposal. He 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 endorses that the numbers add up. Is that correct, Mr. Brewer?
That is correct.
Okay, very good. And next up on the list is Councilmember Spitsely.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I I kind of wanted to bring that up. We have to, as council members in, you know, and Eric says, we need to be careful about how strongly we're advocating for either thing. I think that, you know, our job is to look at this and make a decision. But, you know, at the end of the day, this is not codified in, you know, in any kind of agreement that we have before us. This is not generally how we do this. This is very short notice. If if anybody knows me, they know I hate stuff at the last minute. And generally, if something gives, is given to me at the last minute, it's an automatic no. I have not had a chance to review the final agreement. I I I think that the numbers, you know, I I think that Kathy and, excuse me, Councilmember Dunbar and Mr. Brewer in the administration have done a great job of crunching the numbers, and they make sense to me. I still have a problem with the COVID thing. Again, you know, we have not, you know, specifically go out of our way to provide relief because of COVID. It it, and, you know, we've got other businesses in Lansing that has, that that bothers me. But I cannot, I cannot, I cannot vote on something that is not codified in a final agreement that I have not read. So that's, that's kind of where I am right now.
Councilmember Wood.
Thank you, President Spatafor. Rob, are you still, is Rob still here?
I sure am.
Okay, can you tell us if we've had a reduction in our bond rating?
Yeah, I can speak on that, definitely. So that is correct, that in June of 2020, you know, while I wasn't here, in June of 2020, S and P Global did lower the city's bond rating. In in March of 2020 and June of 2020, both Moody's and S and P Global did a review of the city's bond rating. I'll say thanks to work done by the former finance, interim finance director and and budget director, Jake Brower, Moody's held our bond rating consistent. However, Standard and Poor did issue their opinion in July of 2020 to lower the city's bond rating. This was primarily based on pressures on revenue, property tax, income taxes, state revenue sharing, and a decline in available reserves. So it should be noted also that in May of 2020, S and P lowered the state of Michigan's rating as well. It's important to remember that this reflects the perceived finances at a particular moment in time. Since then, some of the items that S and P noted have been reversed, and the city has received additional unexpected federal and state stimulus dollars. So in in the assumptions you'll see in the spreadsheet, it shows the new, the new money will cost the the new IPA funding is at a rate of 2.35%. That is from Huntington Bank, and that does reflect your current, as they are today, bond ratings.
Thank you.
You know, as noted by S and P.
I think that part of the concern I have is twofold. One, and I appreciate everybody's work, but again, receiving this at the, at the last minute and asking us to to make a decision on this without even having the written document in in front of us. I appreciate the fact that if a resolution is is passed and that the city attorney has stated on the record that everything that's in the resolution will be in in the final agreement, it's obvious that, you know, well, maybe it's not obvious to others, but to me, I'm just trying to figure out if. we do this on Monday, how people figure that this will be ready on the 10th when it wasn't ready now. So um that, you know, that's that's a concern to me. Um the other is we've listened before um to um projections of revenues that we would receive um from the soccer fiasco. And um didn't and it didn't come to fruition. And so for me, this is is difficult um at this last minute, the ninth hour, to be looking at something and being asked to make a decision on something um that takes us into 20 um 38, when we just got done talking about deficits and things that we were looking at and um next year's budget. So I'm, you know, I I'm just reluctant to to be supportive of this. Thanks.
Okay, um Councilmember Dunbar, your hand is still up. I don't know if you have any question.
I don't have a question. I'm just gonna answer some questions.
Oh, very good. Yes, absolutely.
Okay, so I'm gonna I'm gonna work my way backwards because that's what I remember first. So um Councilmember Wood just asked about revenue projections. And um her, Mr. Brewer, who is the most conservative of most conservative, um the the revenue projections only increase per year uh based on 1.5%. It's very likely more than that. Um but we were very conservative about it. We know that in the last 25 years, the lug nuts have increased their ticket sales five times and their ticket prices have doubled in that time. So it's very likely that the ticket prices and revenue will increase over time in the future. Um the other thing that he was very conservative on is in the utilities. Um even before we had accounted for the cuts because of LED, he um increased the expenditures at 3% per year, assuming that 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 could be a possibility. It doesn't always happen that way. Um but it was the very conservative. And then if you notice in column R, which is really X at the top, um the maintenance and repairs schedule, he's got those increasing at 5%. So we really um front loaded sort of the the made very conservative estimates on the numbers for our expenses and very um you know, and only at 1.5 for the for the revenue. So I will say that. The other thing I would mention is that unlike just revenue itself, it's written into the contract that um we get a minimum of $350,000 regardless. So um you know, on the naming rights, on the on the lease agreement, um that those if they have a bad year, we are still owed that $350,000 minimum, which is not the case in many other places. Um as far as the um the IPA and the bond rating and the interest rates, the current IPA, the 2015 IPA that is currently in play, which is what the 125K payment from um from the lug nuts, which uh is being deferred, that that right now is at a 3% or more. Uh you guys can specify it, but it's it's already at a higher interest rate, which is why refinancing it does its cost new cost neutral to the city. Um so it's it's actually getting us along a a lower interest rate and extending the the terms so that we pay less every year, which improves our annual financial position in that process. Um so again, we're we're lowering the amount that we pay on the 2015 IPA. So that's gonna give us more cash flow. We're lowering the capital improvement schedule, minimum payments, which is also improving cash flow. And um and the assumptions are so conservative as to estimate the lowest possible increases on revenue and the highest possible increases on expenses. So I think that we have really covered our bases as far as protecting the city. Um in the we obviously know that these are estimates. That's the way any kind of projection like this works. But I really think that the numbers favor the city. And we did get really, I mean, we get we went back and forth. There's a concession on one end for the force majeure, the concession for CIP. It it's back and forth. Ultimately, we both end up in a better position. Um and the city ends up in in a far better position than we originally thought.
Okay, uh I see. I saw the mayor waving his hand earlier, so I just wanna let him come on in. Um and then I see Mr. Nuswam, I do see your hand. So Mayor Shor.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. Um there are a lot of things that I'm not gonna repeat. Um I can, I'm happy to share all the things that we're doing for our homeless. That was raised, you know, every every one of them has an avenue to to be sheltered. So I can talk about that in any future meeting. I'm happy to talk about all the small business things that we're doing, which is a ton. Um I think anybody that we contract with is coming at us and asking for some form of renegotiation. So it's certainly not just the lug nuts, although this is the only one where we'll actually it looks like make money from it. Um so uh that's the difference. Um but we have a lot going on with small businesses. And I'm happy to explain that at any future council meeting. I wanted to bring up one thing that Councilwoman Dunbar didn't mention, and that is if we do nothing, if this is defeated, if if we do nothing, we still have to, we're still responsible for one and a quarter million dollars. Under the current contract, the 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 lug nuts, we have to provide the infrastructure. And the lug nuts have this contract with the MLB. We have to provide the one and a quarter million dollars. So you're looking at a current contract, you're looking at um the first version, and you're looking at the second version of a newer contract. The second version is definitely better. Uh and I'll be the first to admit that. And I appreciate um Mr. Brewer and 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 our finance team. But if we do nothing, um we're still gonna have to pay that one and a quarter million dollars, or we're still gonna have to bond for it. Um our bonding has not been impacted by by the S and P uh rating. Again, Moody's stayed the same, S and P went down, but our bonding from Montgomery Grain was not impacted. Um so we're gonna have to do that either way. And if we use our current, if we we stick with the current contract, if nothing passes here, we're gonna have that expense. Um so I just wanna make sure council members know that. Uh and it's not, I think uh somebody said it, you know, it's not, it's not on us, it's not on the team. This is what MLB is is requiring in order to have a baseball team. Um so I hope folks will remember that. And uh I know it's last minute. I hate last minute, just like you all do. Um you know, I Lisa worked her butt off and tried to get something, the actual contract written up. Um and asked at, you know, it said, hey, can we just, can we give, you know, these are the conditions we agreed to? And Jim said, we will make sure that the contract reflects it. I you know, I get all of that. But the reality is, this is gonna cost us one and a quarter million dollars. And I think that um I I hope you will support this contract um that will ensure that the city comes out in the black instead of the red.
Mr. Mayor, uh could you elaborate, please, on what you mean by white oh 1.25 million? There's a lot of numbers flowing around here. So I just, what do you mean by that? Um if you could, please?
That's that's the that's the infrastructure uh cost that we have to put in by going to high A. Um we were an AT and A-ball team. We went to high A. You have to have, this is where Tom can probably address it. But you have to have the lights, you have to have, I wanna say there's something maybe with a pitching mound or something with locker room, maybe.
So there's a there's a it's the lighting, it's the batting tunnel, it's a it's a female locker room for referees, etc. Those are being paid for by TMO under the second second agreement?
It's it's all rolled in. It's all rolled into the second agreement. Um it's all rolled in in the new bonding. It's all it's all mixed in together. If we do nothing, then we have to pay for that as an infrastructure cost, unless somebody tells me I'm wrong. That was my understanding is we have to pay for that. In the the second second uh amendment, it is all rolled into the the calculation that Kathy just talked about. Uh it's one of many factors. But again, we're reduced with the the minimums. We don't have to pay the infrastructure or the CIP. Um all the different pieces that Kathy just referenced mitigate that cost over time.
Peter, I understand your confusion with that one. With the way that the MLB is written and the way that our agreement is written, we own the stadium. So we are the ones financially obligated for the improvements that are related to that contract. So we have to eat that 1.25 whether or not we do a new agreement.
That's that's my confusion is this is our, you know, for for the simplicity sake, we're a landlord in this situation. We own the building and from from which TMO is renting or the lug nuts or whomever is renting, we're gonna, I mean, certainly pay those regardless, correct?
No. So, okay, yes and no. So think about, okay, look at my, oh, I'm trying to do columns over here. Um you have your normal maintenance schedule and you have a CIP schedule that's dictated by the contract, which is the minimum that's required by the city to put in for some type of improvements. There's also this these amount of improvements that are required by the MLB, which come within that 1.25. So those improvements are actually being done under that IPA, being financed over time, that IPA. That's going to alleviate some of our requirements, which is why we negotiated down our CIP that's already in place. Because those lights, maybe we would have done that later on the line with our own CIP. But there's a timeline with MLB, these things have to be done within three years of signing the agreement.
Where are these in your spreadsheet? I forgive me, I
You're okay.
I consider myself a reasonably intelligent individual here, and I'm and I'm having a hard time following.
How to unmute myself half the time. So you can't find column N in my spreadsheet. I'm okay with that. Um but yes, it is. So if you're looking at the actual Excel, it's S at the top. But if it's in the it's in the document li- line nine, it's it's um column N. And
And now it looks like you figured out how to mute yourself. I don't know if you did that as an example, but you did mute yourself, Councilmember.
No, I took my, you know, I was pointing at the screen with my finger because I'm holding it on the spacebar so I can talk. All right. So that, yeah, those are the mandatory improvements. So so what would happen if we don't pass this is that we're under the old agreement with all the old CIP numbers, which are 100 every year in rope, it would be column S, and 200 as the max in column T. So those you're you're talking about the 1.2 that we are obligated to do under this new contract with MLB on top of a CIP that, I mean, seriously, the way it's written, we might not even have something to do and we're obligated to put that money in. Like after we start doing the 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 MLB required 1.2 million dollars in improvements, they might, it was said we owed 100, you know, thousand dollars in minimum CIP this year. We if we don't have that, we gotta make it up to spend it, and that's obligating general fund dollars that we shouldn't be wasting on this. Does that make sense?
So the CIP under this arrangement counts towards that 1.2. So we're spending it anyway, but now we're not just spending it to spend it?
That 1.2 has to be spent no matter what.
Right.
Under the old agreement, we also had to spend $100,000 a year in CIP. It's different. It's a different pot of money.
So in a nutshell, in a nutshell, no matter what you do tonight, we're we're spending the 1.25 um in improvements per MLB requirement. What what Councilmember Dunbar and 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 Mayor are trying to say, I believe, is scenario A, we do nothing, we stick with the current agreement, which is less favorable to the city, higher higher annual capital improvements requirements and pay the IP, the you know, and do the the new 1.25 million in in improvement. Scenario B, this is approved tonight, a more favorable position for the city, lower annual CIP payments. But you know, again, you're still doing the 1.25 million IPA.
And then option C is is not approved tonight, and two weeks later, we have a different deal with a third party involved.
Correct.
Okay. I think I've exhausted my list of questions. Um Kathy, did you have more to add?
I think maybe another way to phrase it is that there is a list of capital improvements that we have to put in per our agreement with TMO. So TMO, like basically Scott Keith and and whoever from TMO walk around the stadium every year and figure out what kind of capital improvements are needed. Those are separate than the ones MLB is requiring. They're very specific in their needs that we wouldn't have never asked for and never needed to put in for CIP, like those batting cages or the women's locker room. It never would have been something that we would have put that money into. So there they are really two separate pots of improvements, one that's mandated by MLB and the other ones that we agree to every year for the minimum amount that we have to put in per our TMO agreement as it stands.
Mr. Nuswam, did you wanna add something?
Yes, thank you. Um I I just wanted to let the folks here know that I was the city attorney in South Bend for 10 years. I still think I'm the longest running city attorney in the history of this the town. And the reason I say that is I understand what you're going through. I mean, I I I do. And I think you have three things going for you here. Number one, I I'm very impressed with this council. I've gone all over the country and have dealt with these kinds of things because I've been involved as a president Midwest League and a lot of other uh cities actually have hired me to to consult with them. This has been um a remarkable discussion. Councilmember Dunbar, unbelievable the way you have digested this and what you've done for your city. So I I think that that you've done your due diligence here. Uh secondly, you have one of the greatest operators in the history of minor league baseball in Lansing. Uh I can say that because I've seen other operators. Uh Major League Baseball has recognized it. They just yesterday, the day before, came out with a committee of minor league operators that are gonna serve on an advisory committee to Major League Baseball. And Tom Dixon is on that committee because of his abilities. And number three, you have uh 25 years or more of um history here. I I understand the soccer didn't work out, but I would encourage you to look at the 25 years. Um it is a remarkable success story. And I will tell you, and I'll shut up. Um I I'm aware of almost every relationship or lease that's out there. I can't say I'm I'm aware of all 160, but I'm aware of a lot of them. And the city of Lansing um is getting, has had one of the best deals going. Uh $350,000 payment is on the very high end, certainly the Midwest League. And Midwest League is one of the most successful leagues in the country. So I I think uh that you are all doing a great job here for your city. Uh and you're not getting taken advantage of. I can assure you that.
So I just wanna let anyone know who's tuning in for city council. We are still in the committee of the whole meeting. Um on the last item of that meeting, but we will get to the city council eventually this evening. So there are a few options in front of us, um and forgive me, uh this is uncharted territory for me as well. Um so we have the, is there anyone else that wishes to say anything before I start trying to figure out what I'm about to say? I might get quoted the day for that one.
You had one thing?
Sure, Mr. Dixon.
Sorry, I uh don't mean to jump in, but I just wanted to say one one thing, which I, Dick, I appreciate your comments. I I appreciate the comments that everybody's made. I appreciate what Councilman Dunbar has done and the city finance department and the auditors. This has been uh this has been a, in fact, a very detailed process over the last couple of weeks. And I understand many of you are seeing this late. Um I just want you to know that we didn't create the time on this. This was this was thrust upon us a little bit, to be to be frank, um as part of this MLB thing, which I think will be very good for the city once we have a new partnership with MLB. But the timing was not up to us, uh nor were these requests or requirements for Major League Baseball in terms of these upgrades to the stadium. They were not done by us. What we're trying to do is is create a win-win situation here. And I think you're hearing from everybody that we have done that. Yes, it saves us a little money going forward, but it saves the city money going forward as well. So I I would I would urge you to to accept this tonight. I understand. Um I I think what what the city attorney said is is fair, which is there's nothing you're not gonna prove tonight that won't end up in this deal um as he writes it. Um and I just think things are gonna get more complex if we don't do it under this timetable. I'll just leave it at that. Um but I appreciate everybody's time and um that's that's all I had to add. Thank you.
Okay, Kathy, I'm sorry, Councilmember Dunbar, you were you were saying something?
Thank you. I I I was trying to figure out how to raise my hand and ended up hitting my microphone thingy. So um I was wondering if, I think Lisa is still on here, and could we get
So I was wondering if, I think Lisa is still on here and could we get, because I know she's been working on this agreement. And I know that it's close and I, I'm, I'm gonna commend her. We've been, I was texting people and emailing at four in the morning last night, five in the morning this morning. And she's sick. And she's been doing this from home while sick and been available through the whole thing. And I think she's close. And so I want to know what an estimate is of when that agreement might be done so that we could actually look at it, if that's, if that's what folks are mandating. Although I, I trust, I, I trust you, Jim, I'm looking at you on my screen, that Jim wouldn't put anything in that agreement. He's the original person who wrote the agreement when we brought the lug nuts here. So I don't think we're gonna get screwed in the process of, of approving a resolution and then thinking that something different's gonna go in the agreement. I, I trust him and I trust Lisa. But what is the timeline for that, Lisa?
Um, I'm, I believe that I can likely have this agreement finalized from the city's perspective tomorrow, I would say afternoon. Obviously, that agreement then needs to go to TMO and they need to make their changes if they have any. So I would hope that by the end of the day, tomorrow, we could have it. I don't want to promise anything too early, but I, I think tomorrow could happen.
Okay, may I ask, what do you mean by any changes? Because that's my understanding.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't mean any material changes. I meant linguistically, verbiage wise, in the agreement, if they would prefer something written a different way than the way I drafted it, we have to give them an opportunity to redline and propose an alternate. But obviously, it would still be the same terms that we have agreed to in this resolution and delineated in the resolution. And the meaning of the, the terms would not change. It would just be how it said, how it's written.
Okay.
So here's how I view it, and I'm prepared to be told I'm wrong, as I'm told I'm wrong many times a day. So it's not gonna bruise my ego to hear such a thing. But, so we have a few options. We can, we can do nothing. We can pass the amendment that was in front of us two weeks ago. We can pass the resolution is, is in front of us and pass it on a city council for consideration this evening. We can pass the resolution to the council and then, as I understand it, we need 18 hours. We could call a special meeting Wednesday to review a final contract and not pass the resolution in council this evening. Or we could not pass go and everyone gets 200 dollars. So that's really, I think those are the three to four options. But I do think that there are a couple paths forward here. And I guess I'd open up to, and now I'm gonna just pull away from the, the guests here. And this is a committee discussion about the direction we'd like to go. So I'm gonna let Councilmember Spitzley start and then I see Councilmember Dunbar and then we'll go on the rest.
Well, I, I would prefer to have the special meeting and have a contract in front of me. So I, I will move that we table it and have a special meeting so that we can have the document in front of us for Wednesday or some, whenever.
So I guess that's not, that's not gonna work. I need you to move to pass the resolution, but we won't consider it tonight at council. We will put it on a special meeting agenda because it has to come out of cow, if I'm not mistaken. I'll look to, I see Adam nodding his head, Carol, am I wrong in that? We have to get it out of the committee to do a special meeting on it, okay? So we can't table it, we can table it at the next meeting, but we gotta get it out of this committee first.
I move, I move that the resolution, I move the resolution out of committee, but only for, to have a special meeting to review the whole contract.
Okay, so we do have a motion before us, so we can discuss that. And Kathy, it looks like one of the options of doing nothing has been removed from the table. So now the options are talking about moving forward. And as you've heard, Councilmember Spitzley, the, the goal would be a special meeting on Wednesday to approve the final contract. Once city attorneys proof, proved it, TMO has had a chance to review it and then we've had a chance to review it ourselves.
Okay, I was just going to correct you and say that it's not, do not pass go and, and do not collect 200 dollars. Because if we don't pass go, we pay a lot more.
That's my understanding that we pay it either way, so.
Yes, so, and, and we pay more because the old agreement is, is not as favorable as this. I, I guess I would like to ask then, folks from TMO, to speak to the feasibility of, if your deadline is indeed Thursday, can you sign that agreement on Thursday? If we have a special meeting on Wednesday night? It is not my preference, but I understand that there are council members who need to see that agreement.
So who, well, here's my understanding. We are, I believe our deadline is the end of the day on Wednesday. We cannot wait until Thursday is the answer, but we could sign it, I'd bring it up until midnight on Wednesday. Dick, do you, can you comment?
Well, Wednesday is the deadline. I would be very careful about how late Wednesday you do it.
Okay, so now I'm getting frustrated. And so, you know, I think that as a, as a council, I think that we've gone above and beyond. So, you know, I, I, I'm just gonna tell you now, again, I trust, I trust the numbers for Councilmember Dunbar and I trust the numbers for Mr. Brewer, but I, I am not gonna approve anything that I don't see in total.
Well, and I, I'm.
For me now, it's, it was one day and now it's a different.
No, I, I'm sorry, that, it was always, it was always Wednesday and that's my bad if I, if I miss, if I misstated. Because they said that, you said the 10th, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
We've never changed it for you.
Yeah, so we can do it, we could still have a special meeting on the 10th. Because it's, it's my understanding that OCA will finalize their version. You all will finalize the errors and that should be done by COB tomorrow, which gives us time to review it late on the day Wednesday.
So then what time can we schedule a meeting on Wednesday and still be within our appropriate posting guidelines?
I believe we have an 18-hour window for scheduling a meeting, so we can schedule.
18 hours.
Yeah, so we can, we can call a special meeting within 18 hours. Sorry, Chris, you're gonna have to drive around, if Chris is listening, he's gonna have to drive around town a little bit. And what, so you all need this by COB in what time zone if we're, if we're prepared to approve it? I'm sorry, Mr. Dixon, I guess that's you.
Major League Baseball is in Eastern Time Zone there in New York City.
So five o'clock by Wednesday is your absolute drop dead on this?
Well, I don't, I, I think five o'clock would be the best. I would really hope that you could do it by five.
Okay.
And again, we're not trying, this is not our time.
I, I understand, I'm just, I just don't want to get here on, on Wednesday and say, turns out it was noon and everything's gone, gone to pot here. So I think that there's a, there are some reasonable requests here from, I, I, let me just start off by saying, I appreciate all the work, Councilmember Dunbar, you know, the finance team, the legal team, everybody put into this. But I think I'm hearing, at least from those that have spoken up, that we are not ready. We, we want to look at that, that deal and we trust our city attorney to stick to the resolution. But we're being asked to do a, of quite a long-term contract and want to make sure that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed. So I would propose a three o'clock special meeting. Does that, I believe we can talk about it because we are in an open meeting, so. How about this, tell me if three o'clock doesn't work for you, Councilmembers. I know we have a committee meeting at six that evening too, so we all want to be cognizant of people's time.
Well, that's, that doesn't mean anything. I can always postpone my committee meeting, I'm not worried about that. But the, the, the premise that, you know, Major League Baseball attorneys don't work after 5:00 PM is blowing my mind right now, so.
And I understand that, but can we move on to the, like, does this three o'clock work?
No, three o'clock does not work. It does not work for me. And I don't know, I don't know why we can't have it. You know, everybody has a day job. So, you know, we want this agreement, we're really trying to work through this. But, you know, we're sitting here saying that Major League Baseball doesn't have their, their attorneys won't, you know, be on the lookout for, until 6:30? Are you kidding me right now?
If I may, I don't believe anybody said that, I think.
Kathy, 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 it's inappropriate. I'm not, I don't need you to, to, I don't need you to comment on that. And I don't need you to, to comment on behalf of those two guys.
Councilmember Spitzley, I appreciate that, thank you. I, I, what's, what, one, one works then, Councilmember Spitzley?
I think the meeting, everybody works. I think the meeting should be after five. We, we all work during the day. Now, now if everybody else says no and that they can make it, I will try to make it. But I just think it's, I mean, we don't generally do that where we have a meeting, you know, at three o'clock. Our, our, our meetings are generally, you know, our, our meetings are generally in the evening. It's gotta be.
I sit on two committees that meet in the middle of the day, Councilmembers.
Those are committees, those are not council meetings. But I get it, I get it, I'm sorry, I get it, I'm sorry.
Okay, Councilmember Wood, thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley, Councilmember Wood.
I, I just want to make sure that we all understand a special meeting means only that item would be on the agenda. So, and people can only address that item that might be willing to come and make public comment. So having a meeting at 4:30 or 5:00 o'clock, there's no reason why we can't be done with that meeting by 6:00 o'clock. The, the issue is, we will have had, I would hope, by Tuesday night, 7:00 AM Wednesday morning, the contract, so that we can read through it. If we have questions, we should be able to relate those back to the city attorney's office to try to get those answers before we are before the committee meeting here, the council meeting on that, on Wednesday.
Yes. So did I hear you propose 4:00, 4:30?
Let's try to split the baby with the bathwater and let's just say 4:30, that way.
All right.
That way it gets to make sure that people that do have other commitments are able to arrange those.
Okay, so y'all be on, does anyone have a problem with 4:30? Okay, thank you very much. Everyone be on a lookout for a letter from two of us, probably me and Council Vice President Hussein for that, Councilmember Wood.
So where we are right now, just to recap, President Spatafor, if there's a motion on the table, we need to vote on that. And then when it goes out on the floor, then when we start the meeting, there needs to be a motion to table it for the special meeting.
Yes. All right, so anything else we need to consider? All right, I want to thank you all for a robust conversation. I know that there's a lot of questions and then, I'm sorry, Councilmember Spitzley, I didn't see your hand.
I just, I, I would just apologize for my behavior. Councilmember Dunbar, I apologize for being short. I apologize, everybody, that was pretty unprofessional and so I apologize for that.
Thank you very much.
You know what, can I say thank you for saying that? I, I, I'm gonna just say that I have ADD and there are times when I am thinking something and if I don't get it out of my mouth and I don't write it on a post-it note, I forget it. And so it comes off as me just jumping in and I don't mean that to come off in that way. So I appreciate you, we're all under stress with this. I haven't slept in two days practically, so I am giving grace to everyone tonight and thank you for that.
All right, well, thank you all very much. As I said, robust conversation, I really appreciate everyone's time to the folks that are here as guests.
President Spatafor?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Unless I'm wrong, I believe there's a motion that we need to vote on.
Yeah, no, I was just, you know.
Okay, I didn't want you to adjourn.
Thank you, thank you. It's possible tonight, you never know what I might do, but I just wanted to thank everybody for their time. We will post a special meeting to consider this. We do have to vote this resolution out to council. Just to be clear, there is no intention of moving it at council, so the vote tonight is to move it out of this committee. So your support tonight is only to get it out of this committee. So with that, I will ask Sheri to call the roll.
And to clarify, the statement was this resolution, I want to clarify, we're talking about the resolution you received today.
Yes, the resolution that we received today from Councilmember Dunbar, which I believe everyone should have in their inbox and it won't be on the agenda tonight anyway, so shouldn't mess up that. But yes, the resolution which outlines the parameters under which the second, second amendment has been, is being crafted.
Okay, regarding that resolution, Councilmember Wood.
Yes.
Councilmember Dunbar.
Yes.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes.
Councilmember Garza.
Yes.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Yes.
Councilmember Hussein.
Yes.
Councilmember Spatafor.
Yes.
Motion carries 7-0 to move that resolution out of committee.
Thank you all very much. It is 7:25. I do see no further business before this committee. We will adjourn and council will come back to order at 7:35.